Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this session of Quispam sis Town Council for October 7th, 2025. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is 6:01. May I have an approval of the agenda, please? Councillor Biggar, seconded by Councillor Donovan. Thank you. On the question, please vote. Tim, Councillor Olson's not with us, is he? Okay. Councillor Miller. Motion carried, 6-0. Let the record show that Councillor Olson is away on town meetings. May I have the land acknowledgement, please, Councillor Miller?
Thank you, Worship. We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Quispam sis exists on the traditional territory of the Willisdwig, Malacite and Micmac people whose ancestors, along with the Passemaquadi tribes, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s. We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of this traditional territory. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight. May we make good decisions without prejudice or bias, and always in the best interests of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Councillor Miller. I have some remarks this evening regarding what has been going on with council and throughout the town. So I want to begin my remarks by thanking Deputy Mayor Scryer for chairing the meeting on September the 16th. And as usual, you did a wonderful job to move our meetings in town forward. On behalf of all members of council and staff, I want to pass along my sincere condolences to Councillor Noah Donovan upon the recent passing of his great-grandmother. Noah, from all of us, our sincere condolences. I was pleased to be joined by several councillors around this horseshoe at the Union of Municipalities of New Brunswick Annual Meeting and AGM this year held in St. John. It's very important for us to meet with our peers and colleagues from communities around our wonderful province to discuss the triumphs and challenges we face and how we can be better. The UMMB is a key advocate on our behalf when looking for changes and improvements and support from other levels of government. I was also joined by Deputy Mayor Scryer, Councillors Emma Olson and Beth Thompson, and members of staff at a meeting of the Joint Finance Committee with our counterparts from Rossay. We heard budget proposals from our police, fire and library services, which are three services that our two towns share. And we are ready to bring those proposals to our respective town councils as 2026 budget discussions begin. In Quispam sis, our budget presentations from the various town departments are coming up later this month. They are open to the public and streamed live online. And we encourage you to watch and learn about the town's plans for the next fiscal year. I want to thank our MLA and Minister of Local Government and Minister Responsible for Service New Brunswick, the Honourable Aaron Kennedy, along with the Honourable Wayne Long, MP for St. John, Kenbukasees, and the Secretary of State for Canada Revenue Agency and for Financial Institutions for last week's special announcement of infrastructure funding in Quispam sis. And in case you missed it, Quispam sis will receive about $1.4 million from the Canada Community Building Fund, or CCBF, to go towards street upgrades, lift station number four upgrades, and the Cedar Ridge Boulevard water main expansion. This is part of more than $50 million distributed around the province of New Brunswick. The money will be very helpful as we continue to make necessary improvements to our infrastructure. We continue to work with both levels of government to find ways they can support future infrastructure projects. Quispam sis and its consultants have scheduled a pair of open house gatherings to discuss two important project proposals in the community. An open house for the Gondola Point Road scenic transportation corridor will take place October 15th here in council chambers at Quispam sis Town Hall from 6:00 PM until 8:30 PM. The open house will give residents the opportunity to offer feedback on the current condition of the Gondola Point Road and what improvements and upgrades are important. The project website features a survey and space for additional input. You can find a link to the project website on the Have Your Say page of our website, quispamsis.ca. Also, an open house for Reimagine Hampton Road will be held Thursday, October 16th in council chambers from 6 until 8:30 PM. This open house will include a consultant's report detailing survey results and feedback received through the Reimagine Hampton Road project website during the summer. Residents can also examine and offer thoughts on design options. Both open houses will include a children's activity station with coloring pages and other activities to keep them engaged, while allowing parents and guardians to join the conversation more easily. And don't forget to check out our autumn and Halloween displays at the Arts and Culture Park. Our parks staff have done a tremendous job of capturing the spirit of the fall season with a beautiful display near the two walking bridges. And there are spirits in the air at the Halloween display with all the ghosts and goblins in place for our Dark in the Park event coming up on October 24th. You can find details of that event on our website, quispamsis.ca, through the events calendar. Applications to enter afloat in this year's Santa Claus Parade are now available online. The 27th Annual KV Santa Claus Parade will be Saturday, November 29th. This year's parade theme is "The Lights of Christmas." Register your float through the KV Santa Claus Parade Facebook page. The deadline for applications is November the 19th. And it's Fire Prevention Week. Be sure to take advantage of the KV Fire Department's free HomeSafe program, which includes free home safety inspections and door-to-door smoke alarm checks. Learn about fire hazards in and around your home and what changes can be made to minimize the risk. Visit the department's website at kvfire.ca for more information. And be sure to check out their annual open house at Fire Station Number One on Campbell Road on Saturday, October 18th, from 11:00 AM until 2:00 PM. Tonight, I am wearing pink in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month for the month of October here in Canada. According to the Canadian Cancer Society, more than 2,600 people in Canada will be diagnosed with breast cancer this month alone. So breast cancer amounted for, accounted for 13% of all cancer diagnoses in 2024. But there is hope. Breast cancer mortality rates have dropped significantly since the 1980s thanks to ongoing research and improved proving treatment options. Please give what you can to support breast cancer research and support the cause by wearing pink this month. A note on that, a personal note. I lost my sister four months ago to metastatic breast cancer. So this is very dear and near to my heart and something that we have been supporting for the last seven years that she has been, had been living with cancer. Finally, Thanksgiving is next month, or sorry, next Monday, October 13th. Town Hall will be closed Monday and will reopen for regular business hours on Tuesday, October 14th at 7:30 AM. Please enjoy a safe and happy Thanksgiving with friends and loved ones. If you are able, I would encourage you to donate to our Kenbukasees Valley Food Basket or other causes to help make someone else's Thanksgiving a little happier. Thank you for your attention. I'm looking for a disclosure of interest. Does anyone have, don't see any presentations? Item 5A, Hampton Road Corridor Analysis and Design, presentation from Anglo and Upland. So we have about 20 minutes for this. So welcome with us this evening. If you wouldn't mind giving your name for the clerk when you speak, that would be greatly appreciated. So I will hand the podium over to you.
Thank you. So I'm Andrew Northmore. I'm a transportation engineer with Anglo. And I'm the project manager for this Hampton Road project. Also on the call to support me today, I've got Devin Jennings-Lander, who, and Nathan MacLeod, both at Upland, who have led the, or been involved with the stakeholder, the public engagement and the landscape architecture aspects of this project respectively. So I'll be giving the presentation, but they're both here to support in case there are questions that arise about those specific elements as we move into the presentation.
Thank you for the introductions, and you may proceed forward.
Okay. Do, are you starting a present, is a presentation being started on the Townsend? Or do you want me to share a presentation?
Tim, what would you like he should do? If you wouldn't mind sharing it, that would be perfect.
Absolutely. Bear with me a moment. I only have one monitor with me today. So we should all share my screen, and we will hop over to this. And slideshow from beginning.
That looks perfect.
Awesome. Well, it still says version two at the bottom, so hopefully this is the correct version of it. I will find out as we go. So thank you very much, you know, for taking this time. I really wish that I could have been in the council chambers in person for this presentation. Unfortunately, work took me out of province this week. But I know that this is a really important time of year for the town with making budget decisions. And this is obviously going to be a large budget decision for the town to be making. But, so on this Hampton Road project, we've been doing a lot of different work in different areas of study, kind of looking at all the different infrastructure needs in the corridor. In this presentation, I'll be going over a little bit about the project area. I'm going to talk about what we're doing and what we've been doing, what we've heard from the community, before going through some of the surface concept designs that we've done from the transportation and streetscaping aspects, before wrapping things up with talking about what, you know, the costs of this infrastructure would look like the way that we have put it together at this moment. So as I'm sure you're familiar, the project area that we're working on from Hampton Road spans from the town boundary with Rossay up to Pinewood Crescent and also includes Landing Court. And, you know, through this area, you know, we're looking very holistically at a lot of different infrastructure needs. It's obviously a very core area for the town, being, you know, right near the town center with the plaza, with, you know, the library, the town hall and other key destinations throughout the town. And it's also a major thoroughfare, you know, being part of Route 100, moving traffic through the town to, you know, connect it to roads that lead to adjacent highways into Rossay or, you know, from Rossay into Quispam sis. And facilitates a lot of movement of people and has a lot of stuff going on, making it a very important area. And so in the study, like I said, we've looked at a whole bunch of different aspects of, you know, what infrastructure needs are on this corridor. And there's five that we've been looking at in detail. Obviously, you know, the water utility, installing a water utility is one of the main aspects of this project and is kind of the driver behind it, where that's something that the town is, you know, we know is looking to install to be able to help support future growth in the area, get people off of wells and allow some higher density development. But while you have the road open to install that, you know, there's opportunities to do more things and not necessarily put the road back exactly as you found it, but maybe right-size it, make sure that the infrastructure is going to work for you, you know, going forward, you know, repair some broken things and make everything work nicely. So the other areas, you know, we're looking at sewer utility and making sure that it has adequate capacity and is in good shape. Same with the stormwater management systems underneath the road, as well as the transportation network, how people move on the surface. And then the streetscaping elements that are around it, like how do, how is the road a place within the town more broadly? And you can subdivide these five areas into kind of two main themes. The underground infrastructure, the design for it is largely technical in nature. So there's usually just like a single best optimal solution that works for, you know, your wire utility, your stormwater management sewer utility. But when you start talking about the surface, you know, there's a lot more options to kind of play with in terms of, you know, what streetscaping elements are you including? What modes of transportation are you prioritizing over others? And how are you making use of this space? There's a variety of different ways, and people have a variety of different opinions about how to do that. So this presentation, like I said, I'm largely going to be talking about the streetscaping and transportation network pieces because they seem to be, you know, what people get the most engaged on. But when we get to the cost side of things, I'll also be going back to the water sewer and stormwater management components. So one of the big, you know, publicly facing parts of this project so far has been the Reimagine Hampton Road portal through social pinpoint. That was developed, you know, put through a survey, gave out lots of information about what is going on in the area, what the kind of opportunities are, and to kind of gauge what people are, you know, thinking about what the corridor should be like going forward, how they're using it now, as well as what they want it to be. Because people have lots of opinions about both of those things. And we learned a lot from the survey that Upland put together and sent out. In total, we, for the main survey, got 328 responses, which I know doesn't sound like a lot as a number, but it's actually fairly comparable to, you know, on a percentage basis for surveys that we've done in other areas or that Upland has done in other areas. So there was the main survey that got that many responses as well. There were some smaller scale surveys that were maybe out for just like a week or so that got fewer responses, but also gave some interesting information about what people are thinking about the space. So these are just two of the questions and the results that we got from them. So on the left side of the screen, the residents were asked, you know, what they see the road as in the future. And, you know, 60% of people were saying a lively mixed-use space, multimodal, lots of different housing and shops and, you know, a very mixed-use space within the roadway. So, but there were still, you know, lots of people who said, you know, 22%, it's primarily about moving transportation through, getting access to what's there, but otherwise, you know, moving through Hampton Road. While 17% said similar to how it is now with kind of, you know, just this mix in between those two things. On the right-hand side, we asked what people's top priority was for improvements along Hampton Road. And I'm sure it will surprise nobody who is in the town that item number one was a smoother road surface. It is certainly, from my experience, you know, a challenging road to drive over and is something that can certainly be addressed through this project. But, you know, we still had 20, I have to move my team's panel, 23% of people calling for separated bike lanes as their highest priority, 13% wanting more spaces for activities and social connections, and 3% wanting wider sidewalks. And that's not to say that, you know, the people who want the separated bike lanes as their priority don't, you know, also want a smoother road surface as their second priority. But it's a good snapshot of what people's, you know, biggest, strongest passions are on this corridor. And it leads us nicely in, as I click through, to the main takeaways from the survey in total. So there were five key takeaways, three related to transportation, two related to streetscaping. And surprise, surprise, the top priority for community members was improving the condition of the road. You know, repaving, enhancing safety for all road users. Like I said, it can be a challenging road to drive in some spots, and addressing that is important. People were very passionate about wanting, having stronger support for pedestrian facilities, you know, so wider sidewalks, safer pedestrian crossings throughout the space. And when it came to bicycle infrastructure, half of the respondents, you know, said that cycling safety and bike lanes are important. You know, we saw on the previous slide like 23%, so that that was their highest priority. Though other people were concerned that with adding bike lanes, it may have impacts on motor vehicle lanes, you know, what's that going to do to traffic? It's a very natural concern to have. And, you know, it's no surprise to see that reflected in what we were hearing from the community. On the streetscaping side of things, you know, community members are, you know, very interested in having more space for events and social spaces, especially around Landing Court, which is a very important hub for the town. You know, between the library, the Arts and Culture Park, the town hall, and all those other spaces within there. You know, wanting to see improvements in terms of outdoor seating and landscaping were very popular as well. But it seems like, you know, we learned through this as well that the people of the town are very pragmatic, where they do still want to make sure that there's a balance, you know, between functional upgrades with the placemaking upgrades, you know, while, you know, making the corridor more attractive would be nice, certainly. You know, they still want to make sure that, you know, it functions and does the job that they need it to do in terms of being able to move their way through the corridor or to the corridor, if that happens to be where their destination is. And so as part of our study, you know, we took that information that we learned from the survey of the people we, in looking at the existing conditions of all the infrastructure on the surface through the space, and came up with, in talking with town staff, two general design options to progress forward with that I'm going to talk about in a bit more detail. The photos on this slide are just representative of stuff that I found online that kind of speaks to, in option one, having a multi-use path alongside the roadway versus in option two, having an enhanced pedestrian experience. So the multi-use path in option one, where we would still have a sidewalk on the other side, but one side would have a multi-use path, you know, creates a safe space for cyclists to be able to ride. Though, because we have to make that space for a larger multi-use path, that means that there's fewer opportunities to fit some of the amenities that people might want in a more enhanced pedestrian space. And conversely to that, the enhanced pedestrian experience sees, you know, a more robust pedestrian realm on both sides of the road. So a larger, more comfortable walking space with more benches and planters, trees, that sort of thing. But because it's pedestrian-focused, there's no change to the cycling infrastructure. So people who want to bike through Hampton Road would have to do so in a shared space on the side of the roadway. Now, before I get to the differentiators between these two options, there are a number of things that are common between them in the analysis that we did forward, especially pertaining to what the shape of the road actually is. So we, first off on the list, looked at right-sizing vehicle lanes. In some spots, the lanes are kind of wide, which, you know, fairly typical for, you know, a highway, like a rural sort of highway environment. But as, you know, the town built around it, it became a more urban space and those lane sizes aren't as appropriate anymore. So we tried to right-size those where we could. Making a narrower roadway also helps to slow people down, which once the road is, you know, in much better condition, making sure we have some of those elements that slow drivers down is going to be important. We also, you know, did look at, or implemented a road diet. So we reduced one of the lanes on Hampton Road between Donlin and Landing Court. So right now, that's a four-lane section with two lanes going in each direction. And we reduced that down to three lanes. So there's just one lane in each direction with a center lane that kind of alternates back and forth between, between being like a southbound left turn and/or northbound left turn. We did do extensive traffic modeling of the corridor, made sure that, you know, this would work well in the existing traffic conditions, as well as looking forward, you know, 15, 20 years, making some assumptions about growth. Because we know, you know, you make a change like this to the corridor, it's kind of hard to undo. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, traffic would still flow well. But again, you know, if you're able to do this, it helps create some of the space for the active transportation facilities on the side of the road and is also a proven safety countermeasure for reducing the number of collisions that occur on roads. It makes pedestrian crossing distances shorter. You not only have to cross three lanes of traffic instead of four. So there's a number of benefits to why, you know, we thought that Hampton Road would be a good candidate for this between Donlin and Landing Court. We also addressed, you know, knowing that Hampton Road and Campbell Drive is a very congested intersection. It, you know, we looked at how, you know, we would be able to improve capacity here. Notably, we're not reducing the number of lanes in this area. We're actually looking at adding some right-turn lanes going out into the future. Here, we're showing additional right-turn lanes with storage that go from Campbell onto Hampton going north into Quispam sis, as well as from Hampton turning right onto Campbell, you know, coming out of Rossay. You wouldn't necessarily need both of these to be implemented in the future, but one of them would certainly be beneficial to keeping the road flowing well. And the one from Campbell onto Hampton should, well, I would expect would be the easier the two as it doesn't have, like, private property impacts, unlike the one that would be going from Hampton onto Campbell. We also reconfigured the right-turn lane to make it narrower and have a shorter crossing distance for pedestrians. And speaking of those crossing distances, we also, in both options, implemented Refuge Islands at crosswalks where we could. So these are, you know, nice features in what would otherwise be like your center lane space so that it makes it so that instead of pedestrians having to cross two or three lanes at a time, they now only need to cross one lane at a time. Makes it easier for them to cross. It makes it safer because you can get halfway, look, and, you know, make sure you have enough space to be able to cross on the other side. I will note, we did hear, as I'm sure Devin would attest to, we heard lots about the Median Islands in Hampton Road on Rossay. We're not looking at having these being planted environments or with like, you know, vertical treatments within them. These are like low-profile concrete curb with, you know, curb cut for, you know, pedestrians going through them and not, you know, what we see further down the road. So with what's the same between them kind of defined, I'm going to talk a little bit about what's different between the two options. And at the service level, you know, it's in the multi-use path option, you've got a multi-use path on one side of the road, and we're still including sidewalk on the other. To do this, we're shifting the road a little bit within the existing right-of-way to one side to create more space for the multi-use path, while still leaving, you know, a good boulevard before getting to the sidewalk on the other side. And so here again, like you've got a center turn lane, you've got a multi-use path, and yeah, sidewalk on the other side. This is just one cross-section of one area. So through most of the corridor, we show the multi-use path on, I guess it's the west side of the road going past the plaza and up to Landing Court, where you get to, yeah, the intersection that takes you into like the Arts and Culture Park. But at that spot, we have it transitioning over to the other side of the road and going up there the rest of the way to Pinewood Court. And so in terms of streetscaping for option one, and actually, these three key opportunities linked to option two as well, looked at opportunities to use the Campbell Drive green space, Lila Court Park area and the Landing Court intersection near the public library to improve seating options, add some more hardscaped areas, recycling stations, trees and other related streetscaping features to create some places along the corridor for people to, you know, be. And also, similar to both options, we included bike parking throughout, though it might not be in the right-of-way, it might need to be targeted more at specific businesses so that like you bike to the library and you've got to bike back right at the library, that sort of thing. But option one, it includes street intersections, having planting beds and movable planters at them. You know, where there is space, we would be including street trees throughout the corridor as well to, you know, provide shade in a more natural environment, which I know residents of Quispam sis do love. In some more constrained areas, you know, the soil cells might be required, but they're not as required as in option two. A little bit of a spoiler alert to what we're going to get to further on. And so then option two, like I said, the roadway itself looks very similar. It's just shifted a little bit differently from option one and has a pedestrian realm fully built out on both sides. You know, you'll see in this image, you've got a person walking a bike instead of riding it because it's a sidewalk. But you've got benches and trees, you've got a paver buffer. But you've got benches and trees, you've got a paver buffer to help further delineate the pedestrian space from the traffic space beyond just what the curb does by itself. And in terms of other details, the streetscaping improvements here can, it's a lot easier to put them on both sides of the road, including seating, recycling stations, movable planters along the whole length of the street. I already mentioned that decorative strip of pavers, that's again along the sides of the street. Generally here, there's more constrained conditions for planting trees. You're going to see more soil cells be required just because there's kind of more enclosed space that those trees would be fitting within. But the opportunities for public spaces and like I said, you know, the bike park, and they remain the same as an option one. So trying to really create those spaces within the corridor for, you know, people to be and meet up and have opportunities to, you know, enjoy the experience of Hampton Road. And that gets me to what's obviously the most fun slide, which is the slide that talks about how much these things cost. So the numbers that we have up here, it is important to remember that for the roadway and streetscaping components, we did up designs that look at the entire road, like for its full length within the study area. It's certainly possible to reduce the scope of that. You know, say, you know, the budget isn't available for doing the entire thing with a multi-use path or with, you know, a pedestrian, enhanced pedestrian realm. You know, you could focus on like a narrower section and really limit things down in that way. But the main cost differentiator between the two is the streetscaping for option two, where you would have more soil cells being used to fit in the trees along the corridor. Otherwise, the roadway costs are largely the same. You know, we're moving curb in both, we're replacing all the asphalt in both. There's hardscape surfaces going on the side in both. So those largely stay the same. But there are still ways to, you know, through the open house that we're going to have, learn where people are the most interested in having improvements and, you know, refine things if, you know, the whole corridor itself is a little prohibitive at this time. In terms of the underground infrastructure, we also put together cost estimates for these. So the water utility is largely a cost estimate for what was, you know, laid out by CBCL in their report for the network. We just revised the costs, item costs based on our experience with the area as well as like the specific elements that would be included within Hampton Road as well as finishing the connection on Clarwood to connect that in at Hampton Road with a PRV. We identified as few spots where sanitary sewer repairs would be required. So not a lot of cost for that while we have the road open, but it's a great opportunity for making those repairs. And same in terms of stormwater, much more of the stormwater system was in poor shape when we did our CCTV inspection. And so we have much more extensive replacement of the pipe infrastructure. And the cost for that that we're showing here reflects like-for-like replacement most of the time. So not looking at upsizing the infrastructure, there would be, you know, a bit of an added cost with upsizing the infrastructure if the town wanted to go that route. But it was mostly, you know, replacing what's out there with pipe that's in better condition and then like fixing a couple areas where there's capacity constraints to address those. So, you know, once everything's combined for looking at the whole roadway improvements as well as doing all the underground stuff, the costs come to about eleven million, seven hundred thousand, up to about fourteen million dollars for doing all of that work in one go. I'll also note, so we did not include street lighting in the streetscaping component. But Nathan noted that pedestrian scale street lighting would add like an extra one point six five to two and a half million dollars on top of the streetscaping estimate. These numbers exclude tax. They do include some contingencies. My civil folks said that the costs that we're using, they should be conservative and especially with the contingencies. Like if there's any tweaks or changes based on further discussion with the town, you know, there should be allowance in here for those. But again, you know, the service infrastructure does span the whole corridor and there's opportunities to, you know, right size this to what the town is able to do. And that is the end of my presentation. So thank you very much. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Andrew, and I will turn to council and see if there are any comments. If not, I will ask for a thank you to, to your team, Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for the presentation. I enjoyed it. I do have one question with your costing. And it has to do with the active transportation for the bikes. Do the lanes go right from the corner of Campbell all the way up to Pinewood? The reason I ask that question is it's quite congested there and I don't see anything on the map showing a pedestrian lane or unless I'm not seeing it properly. And if so, where's it connecting from or is it just going to be the start of the lanes that they'll just start there?
Uh, great question. Yes, we didn't go through like a full map of the whole corridor. I didn't expect that we would have time for that in this presentation. But I would imagine that we'll have that level of detail next week at the open house. But I can certainly say for the option with the multi-use path, we, so there's currently bike lanes on the side of the road in Rothse. So we extended those bike lanes up to the intersection of Campbell, at which point we took them off the road and merged them into a multi-use path that ran up the plaza side of the road. It does require shifting, you know, the existing lanes over quite a bit, but was still able to be fit within the right-of-way, to the best of my knowledge. And then continued all the way up the corridor, crossing over at Landing Court and then continuing up to Pinewood before terminating. So yeah, I think the intersection schematic that I showed in here earlier was of the pedestrian realm option, not the bike lane option. So that might have been confusing.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilor Miller, please.
Thank you, Worship, and thank you very much for the presentation. Mine is actually an add-on to the Deputy Mayor's as well. It has to do with the bike lanes. I'm wondering why there could possibly not be an option three? Because right now, if we're going from on the road to a bike lane, and I think you said we got to cross the road again, go on another bike lane, that sounds a bit too dangerous for me. I'm just wondering why there couldn't be an option here that the road is a little bit wider and we have a bike lane just when you're driving along. So if you're driving up through Rothse and you're on the right-hand lane, you keep driving on that same lane versus trying to go left, go on one, go back right and go on another, then you'll have to go back onto the road again after Donlin. So, or after Pinewood. So I just can, don't know why there's another, there's not an option three. Because right now you took the bikes totally off the road. And so, and maybe that option two, the streetscaping does need to be as much, but just have the roads widen up that there's a a bike lane, scooter lane, wheelchair lane, whatever it's called. But I just, I don't know why there's not a third option. Thanks.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
My apologies. Absolutely great question. So we certainly could have had a whole bunch more options of looking at different things. For the bike lane, like the bicycle infrastructure specifically, the, there's just enough traffic on Hampton Road. It's at high enough speed that if we want to create a facility that's going to be comfortable for all road users to, for all, you know, potential cyclists to use, we can't leave it being on the road. It's just not a space that, you know, parents would be comfortable with, you know, having their kids go biking to school on and that sort of thing. So when we're trying to get the bicycles off the road, the most convenient way to package that into a small space tends to be to remove a sidewalk and sort of expand it to be a multi-use path on one side of the road. Because if you have bike lanes on both sides of the road, now you have sidewalk on both sides. That's probably about like two meters wide and then like a bit of a buffer and then a one point eight meter wide bike lane. And that all ends up taking up more space than just, you know, a single three-meter trail and a one point eight meter sidewalk. So if we had tried to have separate bike lanes on both sides of the road that were, you know, buffered or protected or raised up from the roadway to make them comfortable enough for all users, there would have been much more property impacts, especially around the plaza area where the space is, you know, fairly well-built out as it is. So that's ultimately why our cycling option revolved around a multi-use path. And, you know, to your concerns, you know, yes, we would, that would include having, you know, some crossings of the road. But also by consolidating those crossings, like one of them is going to be at a signalized intersection where you can have, you know, much better protection against vehicle collisions. And the other, you know, because you're consolidating all of the multi-use path in one spot, we, you can put in a more substantive crossing control infrastructure to make it much more obvious, you know, this is a crossing space that people are going to be moving through. And part of the reason I'll also add why we included, like, we also wanted to make sure as we were thinking about this that the multi-use path is in the places, it's going by the places where people are going to go to. So thinking about the corridor itself, you know, we're thinking, you know, people are probably a bit more likely to be going to the plaza down near like the Pettingill Campbell side. They're going to want to be going to Landing Court further up. So like keeping it on that side of the road through there. But once you get past Landing Court, more of the destinations in the town end up being on the other side of the road. Like when you're talking about the arena or the schools further down outside our study area. But, you know, most people, we would assume, who'd be using a multi-use path for biking or walking or what have you, would ultimately be crossing the road at some point. So we just would be able to create like a consolidated location for them to do that.
Thank you for that. I guess a couple of things. For biking to school, you're not going to have a lot of people biking to school because they don't bike from there to the school. It's mostly from Stony Croft on that they have to walk to the Quispam Elementary School. But for the open house that I'll be, I'll be there at, will the whole design be shown? Because it's nice to talk and conceptualize. Can you actually have everything out there that I can see what it looks like or the people can see what it looks like as far as a crossing? I know you couldn't get into it today, but for the open house, will that be available? Thanks.
Devin, do you have an answer for that?
Yes, yeah, our intention is to have two roll plots printed, so one for each option, showing the full expanse of each design option. So you can walk through from, from the south end to the north end of the study area for both.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, Worship, and thank you for the presentation. I have a few questions. Maybe I'll just say what they are and then let you answer them kind of at the end, if that's okay. Just in terms of snow removal and those small islands, I just wanted to ask that question. Also, I know you had mentioned at the end about cost and I know we wanted to look kind of big picture visionary, what, you know, is the possibilities and then let's bring it back down to reality in terms of what we can afford. I did notice on the renderings that we're digging up both sidewalks. We have a sidewalk right now going all the way up Hampton Road and was there ever a consideration of maintaining the current sidewalk? And then, you know, taking the space on the other side for the multi-use trail so that we're not spending money ripping up both sidewalks and putting in a strip of grass that we're going to have to now mow and then putting in a new sidewalk. So that's another question. And just in terms of more so a comment, you know, it's, I guess we don't have to look that far, like Fredericton's economy and people rave about their multi-use trails. People move there because of their multi-use trails. So I have to say, I'm a little disappointed there's even an option without having some type of safe infrastructure. Because according to our master transportation plan and numerous conversations we've already had, we've all agreed that, that, you know, we aren't going to be car-centric and that is kind of our way forward as a town. We want an environment that supports movement and health and being in nature. You know, there's two schools on that street. People are now buying e-bikes. I'm already seeing a difference when it comes to the safe infrastructure. So thanks to Dr. Lozier, Mr. Lozier and his staff, I see people using the safer infrastructure already and it's wonderful to get people out and moving. And ideally, especially in that area, I think it's so important that, you know, we want people to be able to get their accessibility, you know, with accessibility and inclusion and however mode they have because that's going to be the core of the town. So I just think it would definitely be a loss if we didn't have some form. Because again, it's not just about the people in Span Dex driving road bikes, which I'm one of them. It's people driving their bikes for transportation, modes of transportation. And in 2025, thinking about our carbon footprint and looking at the world around us, that is the way we're going. So I would definitely like to make sure that we keep that, you know, front and center just for accessibility and, and looking at options. So anyway, that, I guess that's my, my two cents. But if you could answer a few of those questions that I had, that would be great. Thanks.
Absolutely. No, great questions and comment. So I wrote them down, so I'll try to go through them. In terms of snow removal around the median islands, I guess, I don't need to pull the image back up. Pointing to the city of Fredericton again as an example, they, in their trail crossings through the city, have started installing those median refuge islands as well in the road. So you certainly do need to think about snow removal when you're putting them in to make sure that the width of the road isn't too narrow, like the lane width that you're left with isn't going to be too narrow. It's like jam your snowplows. But they are certainly, you know, something that can be worked around. It's a very common concern to hear anytime we're putting, you know, a new additional facility within the roadway, like how that's going to work with winter maintenance. But there's certainly experience around New Brunswick with working around those median islands. So like I personally wouldn't see that as being an issue or at least like, you know, the town winter maintenance staff could reach out to the other municipalities to see like how they're working with that infrastructure for snow removal. In terms of maintaining the current sidewalk, through good parts of the corridor, the sidewalk is right up against the existing roadway. And the main reason why we removed it to put in a new sidewalk is because we had to move the road around a little bit to be able to create enough space on one side for the multi-use path or to create more space for like an enhanced pedestrian realm on both sides. But, you know, if we're looking at, you know, pairing, you know, doing something that's like a hybrid between these options, like there are things in that realm that we can consider. I will note, there were some areas where the sidewalk was not in great condition. Certainly like once you start to get to more the north end of the corridor, like when I was walking through, you could see some of like rebar and stuff that was coming through the sidewalk. So I would imagine that that, some portions are due for replacement, you know, alongside a larger infrastructure project like this. But yeah, I mean, pouring concrete even if, you know, for a sidewalk is also expensive. So, you know, that's something that can be addressed looking forward into design. And two, you stated it wasn't a question, it was a comment. But I can also comment, the main reason why we looked at an option that didn't include bikes was because of what we heard from residents. Where, yes, there were definitely ones who were in favor of having bike facilities, you know, straight through the town. But there were also those who were hesitant a little bit about it and how that would look with respect to how many lanes there might be left for the road if you're going to do that or like what the pedestrian space is going to be like as a result of that. So we wanted to make sure in showing these options, what, the kind of range of what people were asking for, knowing that like when we go to the open house, they'll be able to see like a much more, you know, concrete example of like, oh, like this is what the road looks like in, you know, both these different scenarios and can maybe have a bit more of a tangible item to be able to, you know, lean their next set of opinions on. But yeah, I mean, we're certainly familiar with the town's transportation master plan that called for doing a more thorough study of the Hampton Road corridor, part, which is partially what this is, to identify how to fit improved cycling facilities through here. And I'm, but the, yeah, the reason why we did include an option that did not include a protected cycling facility was just due to what we heard and to try to provide a contrasting option to the multi-use path.
Thank you. I'm just going to go to Mr.
I'm just going to go to Mr. Lozier for a moment, and then we'll go back for a follow-up from Counselor Luck.
Thank you through your through your worship. A couple of of comments to recall from the funding perspective and with regards to whether we do this in phases. We also have DTI contributing under their designated highway program two point. It's a $2.2 million project in 2026 that will see some of the street resurfacing costs come off of this. So there's there's those types of things that will come into play. A council, as we heard last Friday, apparently is still top of mind for our representatives in in higher office that the the Housing Accelerator Jeff funds are are still there. So these are our targets for the the funding. So you know, we have to be aware that it is a it's it's a significant number. Whether we take phase into account or whether we take grant funding into account, those are the types of decisions that we'll be faced with once we make these future decisions. With respect to some of the most recent discussions and the multi-use trail and maintenance, what we've seen is that from our current service level and the equipment that we have, we are much better suited to clear and maintain year round a multi-use trail of say, for example, the QR trail, we can actually keep it clear as opposed to a separate protected bicycle lane that it would have buffers, balusters, things like that annually. It for us, from a staff perspective, would be more investment in equipment to maintain a dedicated protected bike lane than it is to manage and maintain year round a multi-use trail. So we we, you know, take some of the ownership in that we're directing the consultants of what our capacity is from a management perspective. And that's where we found ourselves leaning more towards the multi-use trail. With the understanding, though, that under our transportation master plan, we also agreed that we would be looking at different street classifications that may require different levels of AT. And so what we felt was that in the more rural areas where we could do a road shoulder with a wider bike lane, we could plow that in the winter with a with a the wing, even though we're maybe taking a second pass. But it's when you get into specialized types of structures, it makes it much more difficult to maintain in the long term. So those are the reasons, some of the reasons we sort of encourage the discussion in a particular direction. And also, we are going to see some consistency. We're looking at a multi-use trail on Millennium Drive. The destination theory that that Andrew mentioned about we wanted to get people to a certain point. Those are the types of things that undertook when we were looking at the development of the plan. Hopefully, when we see the public input, you know, we'll get some some additional input. And and again, after tonight, and council has a chance to think about it as well next week, if you're if you're there to have a little bit more discussion on this. But really, we're looking at those concepts. And what we'd like to see is nice. What we can actually afford is something else. And then to the third question is what we can actually maintain afterwards is a whole other consideration. And that's what helped us sort of trend the discussion in this way. The the question, the the most recent question with respect to the sidewalks, Andrew is correct. The we did a sidewalk inventory and under our asset management plan. And in that stretch of the network, we're looking at a short term replacement of of concrete sidewalk. So we would be faced with these costs regardless. If we even if we did nothing, we would be replacing sidewalk. So I think, you know, it's appropriate to say, okay, it's it's reasonable to expect us to replace this with new sidewalk in this particular package. And like I said, if we weren't doing anything, we're just replacing stop, we would be we would be faced with that bill in the next little while anyway. So just some some concepts and some some background that that from a staff perspective that we took into account.
Thank you, Mr. Lozier, for the context. Follow-up question, Counselor Luck.
Thank you, Your Worship. So thank you for some of the insights, Mr. Lozier. And I guess I actually spurred another question I had with your comment. I'm wondering if we ever considered, because when I look at the rendering, you're looking at about a three meter buffer for the multi-use path and a little bit over that for a sidewalk. Was there ever any consideration of multi-use paths on both sides? I mean, a multi-use path means everyone can use it. And I guess I'm just going back to my experience with Fredericton where people are walking, people are running, people are biking, people are using it for multiple purposes. And I'm just wondering, I and again, I'm thinking visionary, long term, especially in this area where we want to bring people, I mean, people from all over, actually this weekend, another group of people are driving to Fredericton to drive around their city because they have these amazing multi-use paths that will bring them to a a pub or to, you know, a a certain store. And I'm just wondering, especially for this application in the core of our our downtown where we ideally want people to come and park and spend the day and build our economy. Have we thought about even looking at multi-use paths on both sides? Because it wouldn't take up any more space. So that's one thing. And then I just want to make a comment that I just want us to be cautious. I mean, I think it's wonderful. We had 328 people fill out our survey, but that's still a very small percent, and it's also a convenient sample. So those numbers should help just give us ideas. It should never be meant to generalize or be kind of hard and fast that, you know, so many percentage want this and don't want that. I think it just gives us ideas, but I just want to caution us when we're talking numbers because those numbers are very low and they're not representative. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. Based on that, what would be for a town of approximately between 18,000 and 20,000? What would be a reasonable number of people who are responding to this type of survey? Just just for context. In your experience, what would be a reasonable number?
Sorry, for us, anytime that we can get a survey response between 1 to 4% of a population, we are ecstatic. So in this case, we are about 1.7% of Quizpams, this is population. And like Andrew mentioned earlier, it was a very similar response rate to, I think, a previous project with the previous master transportation plan.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Skryer, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. My question has to do with, at the end of Lila, that green space there. I I see great potential with that green space in a way to divert some of the bike traffic that children might be using to go up the Pettingill Road up to schools instead of going to that congested intersection where we've got cars coming from everywhere. And right now, it's just green space. So you said you took it into consideration, consideration in which way? That you would actually maybe connect the sidewalk or put the bike lane so that it goes up to to the Pettingill as well? I I I think there's a huge potential there to connect our community without going through a congested intersection.
So I I I guess I'll start with this answer, but then I might kick it over to Nathan to talk a little bit more about the space in around Lila. So I first want to answer, there was a question that that was asked about the multi-use path on both sides. Then I'll just jump back to quickly. The this cross section that I'm showing is just one snapshot along the corridor. And I mean, this happens to be a spot where there would be adequate space on the sidewalk side of the road to fit a multi-use path. You know, you might have a smaller buffer than you would otherwise like or have to try to balance that out a little bit between both sides. But there are other spaces that are far more constrained. Like certainly down near the plaza where when you you see the more detailed plan, we have like multi-use path. Then the four road lanes and then like a monolithic sidewalk that's pretty much right up against the existing, like the right of way limit. So it's not going to be something that's feasible through the entire quarter. It, you know, could potentially be considered i in portions if you wanted to have that sort of facility on both sides. But it's not, it it's not typically what's done. You know, often you'll see the multi-use path in one side, like consolidating cyclist movement onto like the one side of the road in this sort of fashion. But I mean, that's not a hard fast rule to say that you can't do that if that application arises. And to start the second question or the most recent question about Lila Court, for the multi-use path option where we knew that there are cycling facilities in Rossay and we wanted to like, we wanted to do something that does connect to those. You know, knowing that it's going to be your more experienced, seasoned, you know, riders who are going to be riding on the like painted bike lanes on Rossay. But we still wanted to connect to those. That's not to say that we couldn't necessarily do something that connects up Lila towards Pettingill. And I guess that leans into, I know that Nathan, that was one of the areas that you identified as a potential, you know, space for the community.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say like we did identify it as an opportunity for improved public realm. So some of the options, as we mentioned, they can be constrained with how much space we have to work with. So in exploring options for creating spaces for people and and creating spaces for people to meet and spend time, we recognize that the Lila Court green space is an opportunity. And part of the opportunity could be to make a better active transportation connection to Lila. But really, we were just trying to, you're like, identify it as an opportunity and make sure we set aside some money that we could do some improvements to that as part of the overall streetscaping strategy.
Thank you very much. And certainly, it it does come down to affordability as far as, you know, what how we approach this. And I noticed that the some of the options, you know, the multi-use path does happen to show path that is in Minneapolis, doesn't matter where it is. But there's almost half a million people living there, which adds to the, you know, the ability to pay for for those types of of secondary paths. I know the one from New York has a a much smaller population, but it there's no change to that for the for our infrastructure that's noted. So so we have to find a balance in moving forward. And certainly, this raises our hopes for having some changes to the Hampton Road that will be appealing not only for people who are using active transportation or through cycling or walking or pedaling or however the case might be, but also as an attraction down the center of our town or on the main throughfare of our town. So thank you for the work that you've done on this. I'm going to go to Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you very much, folks, for the presentation. It's exciting to consider the evolution of this really important corridor. And as we've been saying, we're sort of trying to imagine things for, you know, the next couple of decades anyway. So and we've been talking about it for quite a while. So it's exciting to see some concepts on this. And yeah. I I guess I have been presuming this, but I thought maybe I should ask. You mentioned, for example, there are a number of spots where the corridor is fairly constrained. And, you know, it's pretty easy living here to picture those in my mind's eye. But I just wonder, this doesn't run us into any situations of like expropriation of private land or needing to buy anybody out on frontage of property or anything like that, does it? I just wonder, I don't know, perhaps our Director of Engineering Works might want to answer that. But I just wondered if that's been something that you've run across in the trying to make measurements and considerations. Thanks.
No, I I absolutely, we certainly considered trying to work within the existing right of way as much as possible. And especially where there, you know, was potential for that initial opportunity to do this, say, next year. This certainly doesn't leave a lot of time to do the negotiations or things that would otherwise be required. And there, off the top of my head, I showed an example of the Campbell-Pettengill intersection where if you were to put in like the right, an additional right turn lane going from like Hampton on to Campbell Road, kind of right near it on like the Canadian Tire property, that would be on private property. So that would need to be acquired. But like I said back on that slide, I don't think that both of those turn lanes would be required in, you know, the remotely near future. You could get by with just one of the added ones. But it it is certainly something that we took into consideration, trying to minimize or like not require as much as possible and can refine through further detailed design as needed to, you know, ma make sure that this is as positive an experience for the community as possible. And yeah, we don't want to leave a bad taste in people's mouths by having to, you know, expropriate to or purchase property where it's not required.
And a follow-up, Counselor Bigger.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. No, I appreciate that response. I was just going to make a motion that Council thank Englobes Andrew Northmore and Uplands Devon Jennings-Lander and Nathan McLeod for their attendance and presentation. And we encourage residents to participate in upcoming community engagement initiatives on October 16, 15 and 16. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Luck on the question. Please vote. Deputy Mayor, are you good?
She's good.
And Counselor Thompson, you're open. Yep, she's good. Motion carried 6-0. So Devin, Andrew and Nathan, thank you so much for being here with us this evening, and we will see you again soon. Enjoy the rest.
Our pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Public hearings, there are none. Minutes of the previous meetings, September 16th, regular meeting. And September 4th, those are two separate motions. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you. I'd move that the minutes for the September 16th, 2025 regular meeting be approved as presented.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Miller on the question. Please vote. Deputy Mayor. She's good. Motion carried 6-0. And for September 4th, a special meeting, September 4th of 2025. Counselor Donovan.
I'd move that the minutes for the September 4th, 2025 special meeting be approved as presented.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Bigger on the question. Please vote. You may have to reboot because we've been sort of. You're okay for that? Positive, okay? Okay. Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, everybody. Unfinished business number eight. Isn't any correspondence number nine. A 355 Hampton Road, PIDs 30220644 and 00250787. A request to amend the developers or the development agreement. And this was the with the applicant Dave McKenzie, owner. And the applicant's representative, Leanne Dagel, real estate agent in attendance. So I don't know if anyone has any questions or if you have anything you'd like to ask our engineers. Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, Your Worship. Well, I just, I guess I just wanted to say that I think that we have, we have a staff report here that lays out very well, kind of the, you know, the chronology of what occurred with this. And I remember well the difficulties being faced by the previous business owner there related to maintaining storage and supply chain issues related to parts and machinery and so on needed for the business that had been there previously. And I guess I just wanted to say that for my part, I think at this point, we probably, it's probably not in our interest to insist the disassembly of of this structure. I'm not aware of there being any I'm not aware of there being any grave concerns or, you know, huge outrage over its presence there. And it seems that if there's interest along the line of making use of it, then that seems to be in keeping with the um zoning that was done related to it. So for my part, I guess I'm in favor of of allowing it to be maintained. If there's a beautification to be done, then I suppose that's a considered uh option. But um get some siding on there that that uh is more befitting of the neighborhood or what have you. But it's not prominent, in my opinion, as I drive along, frankly, uh Hampton Road. It's behind the the uh little two-story house there. And so for my part, I think that under the circumstances, you know, i- it's uh it's there and I I would, if there's interest in making use of it going forward, I would say that there's unless there's something that pr- that creates uh a danger to the public or um really, you know, portends to have like a like a a a an effect on property values or it's going to, I don't know, like attract rodents or something. I don't really see any, you know, practical reason to uh to make move on that. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bigger. Councilor Donovan?
Thank you. Um I would s- sort of along the same lines as um Councilor Bigger. I I'm not concerned with the with the structure itself. What I am concerned about is with, you know, if if the council moved forward with the amendment to this uh to to make it neighborhood commercial, I think is what it was. Um I'm concerned about what what would go in those in those buildings. I don't know. I mean, I know, I don't, I'm sure there's some deals maybe happening behind the scenes right now, but I I just am concerned that maybe it's something loud. Or, you know, and that is, it's a really, that's a neighborhood area and I don't want it to be some big lawn mowing business or uh, you know, like a garage or like it's just, I that's my concern is is where is how it's set up, that it might turn into to that. Uh if you want to speak to that.
Thank you, Councilor Donovan. Would you please give your name to the clerk for our records?
Um I am representing Mr. McKenzie. I'm not here to apologize for his past actions. I just want to uh bring harmony and balance to what's there right now. So the objective today is the amendment to what can uh with those buildings back there. It already is the neighborhood commercial and we are going to have to put in a an a- an application for whatever business does go in there, which then again will have to be approved by council. So you're going to have that opportunity when that presents itself. We do have an active offer. It is conditional at this moment, based on this meeting. So um the idea is documentation there that does show that it was zoned and that there's a process for getting the right business in there to meet your concerns, absolutely. Um I think the only thing that can happen to this space is for it to be improved. Uh I know several of you drive by it quite a few times. Um it does need some TLC. So currently, the, I can't give you all the details about what offers out there, but I can assure you that the intention is to make it much more beautiful. And um to to meet, especially we will put the, they'll put through the uh recommendations or the application to get approval because that is one of the conditions, that the particular business interested in it meets your criteria uh or the criteria of neighborhood um commercial. So does that answer your question? Perfect.
Thank you. And and of course, it has to go through the uh through, you know, uh the proper channels before we, before council has a say in this. And as you say, it it has to meet all of the requirements for a developer's agreement or for any change for the usage of of that particular area, whether it's the building itself, the main house or business building or the uh seacons in behind.
A a hundred percent. And that's really the first step. We're just trying to add to its asset value and beautification. That the having those buildings back there is a key component in attracting a a business that we feel would be an asset to Hampton Road. Um so it is, it is kind of pinnacle of having that. It's a great use space uh unlike just the house itself. So that's really where our first step is to just have a property that has more sellability and attracts the right business, which will fit the model.
Thank you.
Under the neighborhood.
Councilor Donovan, did you have a follow-up question?
And I was gonna say, I'm again, I'm not, I'm not against um, you know, business or hindering any any further business in that area. I just, like, I I just had a few concerns is is my, it was my only thing. Uh from my opinion, moving forward, you know, we have the staff report in our, in our um, in our kit here. I would, I would be more inclined to choose either option two or option three. Um option three seems to be what would be more um attractive to me at the moment, but I I'm interested in hearing what other people have to say. But thank you for your uh, thank you for your um explanation. I appreciate it.
I don't know what these options you're referring to.
Thank you, Councilor Donovan. Uh Councilor Thompson, please.
Uh thank you, your worship. Um I would be inclined to go with option two. Um to approve the request to amend the development agreement and permit the existing structures to remain on the subject lots in its current conditions, understanding that obviously uh the new owners have to go through. Uh well, as as uh Ms. Gogan has stated that th- the the uh people that are are interested in it, they're also interested in in beautify, beautifying that facility.
Exactly, yeah. They're, they've, it's part of the condition that they were go- gonna be uh bringing it up to code. They're gonna be putting the siding in and 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 making that facility on the side uh more weather-tight and yeah.
Mr. Colburn? The fact that there were a couple of options, uh Councilor Thompson was making a motion. Do we require a motion this evening or no? Or is it too premature?
Um council can request additional information. They can put forward uh one of the options um tonight. Would have to be obviously drafted and brought back to the, the amendment would have to be dropped, drafted, brought back to council.
Okay, thank you. So it's been moved by Councilor Thompson to go with um which number?
Uh question for clarity, please. Go ahead.
It's a thank you directed to uh Mr. Colburn. I just wanted to clear it to clarify. So the app, the applicant is requesting for us to basically allow him to keep the buildings on site so he can sell it. Um and I know that there was a concern before and we were basically asking him to remove the building. So I just wanted to be clear, I'm trying to understand this, is that if we say yes, he can keep the buildings as per the developers or we're taking it out of the developer's agreement, they're selling the building. Do we have any control over going back to the new owners? When I know that they said that they have to do a new developer's agreement, but in that developer's agreement, can we say to the new owners, you have to remove the building or you have to beautify it? Or have we lost our ability to do that once we say we're taking it out of the developer's agreement and this other new person buys it with the buildings on site? I just want clarity on like kind of what our recourse, only because there was concerns prior and we had asked him to remove them. So I just don't want to make, I just, you know, want to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Through through you, your worship, to Councilor Luck and to council. So what's come before council tonight is there is an existing clause in the development agreement. So tonight, what the decision is, is is council upholding the current status, which basically says the property sold, the building must come down, no other options. Which means the current agreement stays status quo. If it is council's desires to say, let's entertain additional options, that being the building can stay. However, the next purchaser or any future development must address the buildings in whatever language that looks like. If that's the desire of council, then that motion would include that council permit the buildings and an amendment to the development agreement comes back to council. Because that amendment has to be approved by council. So what what I'm, what we're asking for tonight is what is council's flavor? Do you want to have the buildings removed or do you want us to look at option two? Which means putting forward that the buildings exist, however, future owners must beautify or whatever that other option is. So that means I take that, go to our solicitor, we come up with the magic language, it comes back to council for ultimate approval. In addition to that, any future development of that property is subject to another development agreement. So what we're doing right now is we're addressing that clause in the existing agreement that says the buildings have to come down. So the property owner first came to council to say, you know, is there any options? Do I, is that clear, you know, that this is what's happening?
Can I ask just one clear fact? So if, let's say, we say yes, the buildings can stay. I just, I'm just wondering, the new owner, can we ever come back and say, now we want the new owner to remove the buildings? Or once we say the buildings are staying, it's really just, we have only have the flexibility of seeing what they look like, but the buildings are staying forever? That, okay, thank you.
So Councilor Thompson, you made a motion for um number two. Deputy Mayor Schreier, are you seconding that?
Well, I will, but. Wondering if um. You're uh going to option three before we vote?
Yes.
So would you like to read option three, Councilor Thompson?
Yes, your worship. Option three, approve the request to amend the development agreement and permit the existing structure to remain in the subject lot with the condition that the exterior of the building be sided in a cladding approved by the National Building Code in a color scheme that is acceptable to the development officer or their designate. In addition to the options above, the following is recommended by staff in all instances, instances that the subject lots PID zero zero two five zero seven eight seven and three zero two twenty uh five fifty-four be placed on the service and province of land is that stating that any new landowner will be required to enter into a new development agreement with the town.
Thank you. Mr. Colburn, please, on the question.
Thank you, your worship, through you. If I would just clarify, option three, so option three means that the work has to be done prior to the, prior to anybody buying it. So essentially, the current property owner has to do the work. And then if it sells it tomorrow, property owner, the purchaser says, well, that's not exactly what I wanted anyway. So I'm going to undo all the work that was originally done with the condition. So I think that moving forward, I think move the 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 motion, if I may, your worship, is that council's, council's um desire is to see the buildings remain, however, the per- the future owner to to beautify them or make changes. So it's it's, for me, it's just having a direction of council of A or B. Are the buildings going or are the buildings staying? If the buildings are staying, then I can work with the solicitor to come up with the wording that will come back to council. That's, to me, it's it's A or B. Are they staying or are they going? If they're staying, then that's, we can go with that.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn.
Yes, your worship, they're staying. And um I'm changing back to option two because the expense for the uh present owner to to uh re-clad and do all of that before is outlandish. It just, you know, couldn't happen. So, well, as far as I know, I I mean, if it was me, I wouldn't be doing it.
Okay, so the clerk has your uh change once again and.
Back to option two.
And uh so it was moved by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier. On the question, uh Councilor Luck first. Oh, sorry. You're okay? Uh Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I'm really clear. When we're talking about these extra buildings, we're talking about the blue one, the Quonset, and the two containers. So there's three buildings in total besides the main building that we're discussing. So all three of those buildings will remain, plus the primary residence or the primary structure.
Mr. Colburn, your response?
Through your worship, to Deputy Mayor, it is the outbuildings. So that includes the the seacons as well as the blue Quonset. So that's what we're addressing.
Deputy Mayor, are you okay with that response? Okay, thank you, Mr. Colburn. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We have a motion on the table. I, option number two, to uh keep all the buildings as are moving forward, moved by deputy, uh by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier. On the question, please vote. Motion carried six zero. Thank you very much. And thank you for being here this evening.
Yeah, I just, I one really quick thing here. Uh I have the purchase and sale agreement here. Um so we are going to try to work with your dates. We do want to do this quickly and so if there's something that you can share with me later.
That 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 um, that is something that you'll have to, we've already closed this item, so so it would be.
You don't need any of this stuff, but.
Not at this point. That would go to uh Mr. Colburn.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Have a good evening. Thanks very much, Leanne. Item number ten is bylaws. There are none. Item number eleven. Oh, 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 it didn't make my paper copy. But I do have it here on my screen. So I am sorry. Councilor Miller? You may go ahead. There you go.
Thank you, your worship. Uh and thank you, uh Mr. Loge for the for the update. Um I guess I was, you know, this, we had asked, I think, oh my gosh, must have been five years ago now. Um and this, for those that weren't around the the horseshoe at that time or or in this meeting or in this the this area, is Queensberry was a big discussion on on speed and that we end up going from fifty down to forty. And then you've got Minstrel at thirty. And then we said, well, all residential areas should be forty unless unless posted or sorry, be forty. Um and we did make a motion for that, but you know, reading through the documents that we just got now, I I think it's also hard from a provincial point of view because I think it's provincial law that if you're on a side road like uh some can be eighty if it's not posted and if you're on a rural street, it's it's fifty. So um I I guess this is something that maybe we should look at later on. Um I mean, I'm glad we've got some data and numbers to send to the to the person that was asking. So I would respectfully ask that we we send them this this information. Um it's just, he's a bit confused because I did tell him it was forty because I thought it was forty. So that started this whole discussion. Um because people are coming up a thirty zone or forty zone into a a shorter street that's now a fifty because the police did show up uh and they monitored and they just said, ah, it's fifty, they're going, they're um going the right speed. Um but I think this also, we haven't had as many lately, but I think this is something that we gotta look at in the in the futures. I know stop signs become a contentious issue sometimes, but you go down Donlin, it goes stop, 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 and people do slow down. And depending what happens with the new developer, that road that goes down, i- it goes to a crest and it goes down a hill again. So it will speed up as people go down, if if it does connect eventually. So that may be something we look at to actually have a a sign posted there, just because that will be a little bit of a shortcut. But I do thank you for the information. I um again, part of this whole discussion and emails we got was was because of me because I walked my dog by his house and I said, oh, it's forty. And then the police officer came and said, no, it's fifty. So so then we had. So, so then we had that discussion. Um, and they, he also asked, put a forty in front of my house, I don't care, like, just to do something, so. I do appreciate that, and like I said, I would just ask that, I mean, we can have more discussion on, we haven't had that many speeding discussions lately, but it does come up quite frequently, so. I don't know how many signs are in the budget for every year, for, for different speed, speed signs, but I do appreciate the information, and, and again, I know we did make the motion, but I, I, I guess, remiss and upon the, the other factors that it, unless the whole province was like that, it's pretty hard for us to, to enforce it with the signs, thanks.
Thank you councillor Miller, uh, Mr. Lozier, please.
Thank you, your worship, through you councillor. And, and, and the, the, my memory is the same as yours as we move forward. I recall council making the motion to do this, and then when we introduced the concept of the transformation, transportation master plan, it was subsequent, we said, let's get a, a, a full view for the municipality as a whole, that's where we, we went to the recommendations of the transportation master plan, and when that was presented, and this particular item was presented during the presentation of the plan, uh, you know, council, there was no, it didn't come up again, so we sort of left it where it was. But that having been said, we are going back out to this particular location, recognizing what you're saying about the length of the street, the configuration of the streets, we're gonna be putting the speed counters down again, because it's now, these were done in July, we're gonna get a school count. But I've also asked engineering staff, look at the signage configuration, and, and some of the, some of the contributing factors. Because, you know, we have no objections to reposting streets, as long as it's warranted, and we can do that, and, 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 you know, Lord Lowe's will come back with an amendment to the traffic balla and post that street, you know, if it comes to that. And any street that's made that request. From the staff perspective, for us, it's a little bit more, and, and the police have told us, it's a little bit more reasonable if we give them a, a reason why it's posted a certain way, rather than just assuming it is. And then we post it appropriately, we've got, um, you know, twelve grand in the budget for signs every year, and, and we can post forty kilometer signs for, for most of the streets, if there's a legitimate reason to do it. So, you know, it is definitely something that we'll review, the, the counters are going down today or tomorrow. We'll get an updated number, and we'll also can look at the configurations and the geometrics of the area. And we'll come back to council with, with some results of that.
Thank you, Mr. Lozier, for the explanation. So that was for information only at this point. So we'll go to item number ten, bylaws, there are none. Item number eleven, new business. So, community investment funds, the finance committee recommendations, and the staff report from the chief administration, administration officer was in your kit. Deputy mayor Schreier.
Thank you, your worship, the finance committee did meet, and, um, were presented with the, um, applicants that were successful in completing the new policy on speces- specifications of the new policy, that I think council is aware that we passed that earlier in the year. So, um, there were, um, as you can see, there were a total of nine applicants. And, um, I believe it's, um, five that were successful. One, two, three, four, five, five are successful, they meet, they met all the criteria that was set out. Staff relayed to us that they found the process very good, that, um, it was easy to follow. It took a lot of guessing out of everything, so, um, we're, we are allowing a total of, um, is it ninety-seven thousand? For the year, ninety-six? And so we're, uh, it's broken down into two rounds, so this is the first round, and this comes to thirty-seven thousand. So if you are in support of this, these are the four that recommend, are recommended to go forward to the budget.
Did you make that motion as the chair? So it's been moved by deputy mayor Schreier, seconded by councillor Bigger, on the question. On the question councillor Donovan.
Thank you, I, I just, there seems to be a slight discrepancy with the, um, it says finance committee recommendation for the, for the Hammond River Angling Association, they've asked for twelve thousand three hundred fourteen. And it says that the finance committee recommended twelve thousand one hundred and thirty-four. And, but we're only give, but in the, in the package, I think it says ten thousand. So there's three different numbers there that I'm not entirely sure about.
Miss Esti, I, I believe we went with the twelve thousand, did we not? Good, good catch, I believe it was the twelve thousand, what, what they had asked for, that we agreed to.
So the actual numbers are in the staff report, um, recommendation, and this was typo. Deputy mayor?
Could we just hold on for a minute, Lee, uh, Miss Esti's taking a look at that? Was it, I believe it was the twelve thousand?
That's what was in, yeah, the, the Excel sheet, the recommendation was. Twelve thousand three fourteen.
Well, yeah, I'll just give, um, Miss Esti a moment to be able to cl- confirm what the figure was.
I'm just making sure there's not a maximum, I don't think there was, but no. As far as I know, we were giving them the twelve thousand three fourteen, it might just be a, a typo in the staff report?
If I amend my motion to, um, to include to change the Hammond River amount to twelve thousand.
Three hundred and fourteen. So the motion was moved forward by deputy mayor Schreier, seconded by councillor Bigger. We will make that correction, if there was an error in the documentation. On the question, please vote. Councillor Bigger, please.
Yeah, I just, thank you, your worship, I just, my recollection is that we did perhaps have with community grants previously a ten thousand dollar cap. And so, can we just confirm that that is not the case, uh, before we have the vote? Or should we make the, should we? Seems like it wouldn't be too hard to find out before we move ahead, but, and I could be wrong, but that was my recollection, so, I thought I'd bring that up.
So the question is, uh, if we need more time, we can perhaps. It's ringing a bell with me, too. I'm just trying to find the application. All right, so on the question, so as, as presented, we will, uh, have a vote on the Hammond River Angling Association. No, sorry, we are voting on all of these, and we will make sure that we clarify that whether or not there's a cap. If there is a cap, it's ten thousand, if there is not a cap, it would be twelve thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars, okay? All right, on the question, please vote. Deputy mayor, is your voting coming up? She's good. Motion carried six zero, thank you folks. Nominating committee recommendations for planning advisory committee appointments. There was a note in your package on this one. And it was the nominating committee's decision to go forward. Noah, uh, sorry, councillor Donovan.
Uh, thank you, I'd move that council, uh, accepts the nominating committee's recommendations as presented, approving the reappointments to the planning advisory committee.
Thank you councillor Donovan, and seconded by councillor Thompson. On the question, please vote. Motion carried six zero. Item C, council final acceptance, Woods of Foresters Cove Phase Two subdivision. Staff report from Engineering Technologists. Councillor Miller.
Thank you, your worship, whereas the developer has satisfied the minimum requirements in accordance with subdivision bylaw zero three five and the developer's agreement, it would be appropriate for council to grant final acceptance of the Woods Foresters Cove Phase Two subdivision. In addition, we recommend the council approve release of the security bond balance of six thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ten cents to Timmy Dean Chason.
Thank you, it's been moved by councillor Miller, seconded by councillor Donovan, on the question. Please vote. Motion carried six zero. Item number eleven D, council final acceptance, Fernwood Park subdivision phase six. JP Custom Homes Limited, staff report from Engineering Technologists was in your package. Councillor Donovan.
Whereas the developer has satisfied the minimum requirements in accordance with subdivision bylaw zero three five and the developer's agreement, it would be appropriate for council to grant final acceptance of the Fernwood Park Phase Six subdivision. In addition, we recommend the council approve release of the one hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-five cent bonding to JP Custom Homes Limited.
Thank you, it's been moved by councillor Donovan, seconded by councillor Miller, on the question. Please vote. Motion carried six zero. Item eleven E, council final acceptance, Carson Hill Estates Phase One dash six two nine two four eight New Brunswick Limited. Staff report from Engineering Technologists is in your kit. And that will be moved by councillor Donovan, and seconded by councillor Thompson. Councillor Donovan, please raise the motion.
Whereas the developer has satisfied the minimum, minimum requirements in accordance with the subdivision bylaw zero three five and the developer's agreement, it would be appropriate for council to grant final acceptance of the Carson Hill Estates Phase One. In addition, we recommend the council approve release of the thirty-five thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollar bonding to six two nine two four eight New Brunswick Limited.
Thank you, moved by councillor Donovan, seconded by councillor Thompson, on the question, please vote. Motion carried six zero. Stephen W. Ryan subdivision lands for public purpose. Council assent being requested, staff report from director of planning and development, or development officer. Looking for a motion on that. Councillor Donovan.
Thank you.
Seconded by councillor Bigger, councillor Donovan, please move the, the motion.
The council grant assent to the Stephen W. Ryan subdivision plan, so that the plan can be certified by the clerk with respect to the assent of the council, and the plan can be approved by the development officer for registration, which will result in the LPP being vested to town.
Thank you, on the question, seeing there are none, please vote.
Yeah, I'll correct it.
Motion carried six zero. Item eleven G, Woods of Forester, Foresters Cove Lot Twenty, Phase Three subdivision. Request for council assent, staff report from director of planning and development, development officer. And that is being moved by councillor Miller.
Yes, I'd move council grant assent to the Forester Cove subdivision Lot Twenty plan, including the required LPP contribution for his, for this subdivision. So the plan can be certified by the clerk as, to the assent of council, and the plan can be approved by the development officer for registration.
It's been moved by councillor Miller, seconded by councillor Donovan, uh, and Mr. Colburn on the question.
Thank you, worship, through you, worship, to council. So, looking for some additional information or clarification on this one. It's included in my staff report, I've outlined the subdivision development, uh, sort of background, but I'm also looking for direction in terms of council's desire with respect to how LPP requirements are to be fulfilled in this particular phase. It's a one lot phase, which means, as I've indicated in my staff report, it can be land for public purposes. That could be, um, as part of this subdivision plan. It could be looked at in a future phase, or if council wishes to go with cash in lieu of land for this particular subdivision. Cash in lieu would equate, equate at this stage to seven hundred and fifty dollars in accordance with the subdivision bylaw.
On the question, deputy mayor Schreier.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn, for bringing that to my attention, our attention, and it would be my leaning to go with the land where it is, um, close to the water, the more raw land we can have down there, the better, as far as I'm concerned. So, I would go with, um, having the land, seven hundred and eighty dollars, not gonna do anything for us, but raw land may help with stormwater and lots of other things.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor Miller.
Thank you, worship, um, I, I unders- for my understanding is just, when do we get that access? Because if I'm looking, that lane is supposed to go, can continue on, and there would be access at that time. So, I, I don't know if we've ever done this in the past, where, I'll use George Queen before he sold the, to Black Fox, that was supposed to be land for public purpose, and that was fifteen years in, in the making, so. The other one, if I'm not reading this incorrectly, it will give, uh, an access to, to the river. It's just, as that road goes farther down, I think that road only has three houses on it now anyways, so. I'm, I'm okay with, yes, we want to get the land, or, sorry, want to get close to the river, but it looks like we will get close to the river, so.
Thank you, on the question, it was moved by councillor Miller, seconded by councillor Donovan, councillor Luck.
Um, just for clarity, so phase three is just two building lots?
Mr. Colburn?
Through you, worship, just one, this.
Just one?
One that we registered, I believe the tentative plan that's submitted shows two, but, but what will be, what will be registered will be one at this stage.
And then the future development would have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
If that, yeah, if that ever happens. So again, uh, through you, worship, just some additional, I guess, clarification. So again, through you, Worship, just some additional, I guess, clarification. You know, I don't think, in terms of land for public purposes in the area, I don't think we're looking to create a means-called beach or anything like that. But it simply provides access to the other residents in that sort of neighborhood or community that would simply want to access the river. So that's sort of where that's going. But I just need some direction in terms of his cash for this phase. Or do we wish to say it needs to be satisfied in a future phase and what that looks like?
Follow-up, Counselor Luck.
Yes, I think we have to be careful, especially in light of people wanting to develop. We don't want to put barriers in place because, let's say, they come back and say, we want to put two more lots. So we're going to take another chunk of land to have access to the water. And then two more lots, another access, you know? So I guess I'm just looking at the grand plan, which is what we typically do. And it looks like there is a big chunk of land given for public purpose when the next phase of the development is proposed. So I guess, in this case, because he's just really wanting to build one lot, I would be fine with the, in lieu of the land for public purpose, the seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Just on the process, I believe that somebody did put the motion forward. Has the motion been brought forward? So in the motion, we should put the direction of what we want to do with the land for public purposes. I don't think that's in the motion. Require LPP. It just says require. Is by that, Mr. Colburn, do you mean actually take the land? Is that the intention of that motion?
Through you, Worship, the intention of the motion is to grant assent to the subdivision, but also provide direction in terms of LPP will be fulfilled through cash in lieu or LPP will be fulfilled through land dedication in the future phase.
So with that, I would include that in the motion, that the LPP be granted with land.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Donovan. On the question.
Well, I'm sorry. Well, I made the motion. I thought the motion was for land for public purpose, but in, as it showed here in phase two or three. Like, but I would prefer the land for public purpose than the seven fifty. But it's on the...
We can have a second motion following this motion, Counselor Miller. We're not amending it. We're going to have another motion.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's why I was confused.
So the motion on the floor is council grant assent to the Foresters Cove Subdivision Lot Twenty Plan, including the required LPP contribution for the subdivision so the plan can be certified by the clerk as to the assent of the council and the plan can be approved by the development officer for registration. And Counselor Luck, did you have, okay? And Ms. McGinnis, you didn't have your latest? All right, thank you. All right. On the question, please vote. Deputy Mayor, you okay with that? Yes. Motion carried six zero. At this time, we can have a second motion for Woods of Foresters Cove Lot Twenty. And this one would be in regard to land for public purpose as opposed to collecting the money portion of it. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, Your Worship. I would move that the land for public purposes for the Woods of Foresters Cove be received as land.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by... Do we have a secondary for the motion? Counselor Thompson. On the question, Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, Worship. Again, I worry the, I guess, precedent this sets when people that are trying to develop in our town come for permission to develop their land. And especially, I mean, when you think about land on the water, and I think it's great that, you know, in the next phase of the development, they've given a big chunk of land to access the water. But I think in this situation where they're asking for one lot, to actually take a chunk of land to access the water, I guess I'm just thinking if it's our land in terms of just, you know, legalities over... Like, you know, I think there's a resident right now on Model Farm Road that is complaining about people accessing the water and, you know, the behavior down there. Like, I guess I just wonder what our liability is for... Because it looks like we're already getting a piece, three lots over. So how many pieces of land do we want? And if it's our land, what's the liability for that? And then I also think, what's the message that it's sending to the community when people are trying to build or develop land? And we're, you know, especially when it's on the water and it's one lot. But, you know, I guess what's the impetus for people to try and develop? So I guess I'll ask that to either Mr. Colburn or Mr. Logue.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. Mr. Colburn, please.
Through you, Worship. So this is the reason, this is the reason this is before council, so for council to provide staff, development officer with a direction in terms of how do you want the LPP contribution, which can be either land or it be cash. Subdivision bylaw says if subdivision's on the river, council will take land. So in this particular case, it is a subdivision on the river. So the direction in accordance with the subdivision bylaw is to take land. This went to PAC. That question was asked of PAC. Do you wish to grant a variance to that particular requirement? Or do you wish to have cash? PAC direction was to recommend land in this particular case. So council has to provide an assent to the plan, which includes whether it's LPP cash, LP contribution through cash in lieu, or if they wish to say, we want to see land in this particular case. The land contribution amount is based on the land area that's being subdivided. In this particular case, it's about six hundred and some square meters, which is not a large chunk of land. However, recognizing there is opportunities for future development, that can be tacked on to any further development in the future.
Thank you. The motion, council accepts the required LPP contribution of the Foresters Cove Subdivision Lot Twenty be fulfilled by a land contribution. On the question, Counselor Miller.
Oh, no, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Seeing there are no further points of discussion, please vote. Counselor Donovan, are you okay? I'm glad. Thank you. The motion was carried five one with the negative vote coming from Counselor Luck. Thank you. Item H, eleven H, Fernwood Park Lot One Sixteen Subdivision. Asking for council assent. Again, with a staff report from the Director of Planning and Development, our development officer, Mr. Colburn. So could we have a motion on that item, please? Anyone at all? There's no motion. Would you read the recommendation? Thank you.
Thank you, Worship. Recommendation, this, the development officer considered the approval of Fernwood Park Lot One One Six tentative subdivision plan is requesting PAC recommendations with respect to the suitability of the proposed one hundred and eighty meters of LLP and recommendation to council to accept the LLP and planting of trees in the proposed LLP land to be completed by developer as part of the tree restoration plan requirement for Fernwood Park Phase Six and the granting of eight-meter lot dev varies for Lot One One Six. Is that sufficient?
Perfect, thank you very much. Happy to see trees being planted, for sure. And item number twelve, reports. Okay, sorry. So it was moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Bigger. Mr. Colburn, please.
So through you, Worship, it's the recommendation from the Planning Advisory Committee is to accept the land for public purposes that's been provided on the plan and to ensure there's planting of trees along that in accordance with the Fernwood Phase Six. So the motion or the recommendation is that council grant assent and accept the land for public purposes, the land that's being presented on the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. On the question, it's been moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Bigger. On the question, seeing there are no further comments or questions, please vote. Motion carried six zero, thank you. Item number twelve, reports. Those are there for your review. Item number thirteen, business arising from Committee of the Whole. There is none, but we will be returning to Committee of the Whole. And adjournment, and I see Deputy Mayor Schreier. You're only one. It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier. And seconded by Counselor Miller. On the question, please vote. Motion carried six zero. Thank you. And we're going to take a break so that we can go back into close. Okay, but we're going to have a little health break, though, for about five minutes. So if we could come back here by about six minutes past eight. Thank you, everyone.